To tell, when I see live stream, does that represent anybody and everybody who's on live stream? Yeah.
It's Josh logged in to live stream us.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And he, he gives me a report usually, especially in regular session meetings with the attendees at the beginning and then Nancy's noting that in minutes.
Okay.
So if you're curious to know how many people on the live stream, we can always ask him and then he'll shoot me a note.
Yeah, it's always just one of those things I, you know, I know we run, we have a little bit more of a security risk when we do the stuff on Zoom. Um, but it is nice to know who's there when you're chairing something, well, not just chairing, but when you're part of a session, but that's just what we live with. So that's okay.
There's seven people live streaming right now.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
And we can't tell who those.
Yeah, no, I knew that. I knew that. Yeah. Okay.
Catherine, when you see that, it's basically the vehicle that connects Zoom to the YouTube stream. So that's, that's what that does.
Thank you. Two o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the April 10th Council Work Session. We hereby call this meeting to order. Uh, we've got a couple of things and I'll just check and make sure, let's see if there's anything else, but we're going to be probably the, the, the majority of our meeting this afternoon will be facilitated by Leila and then also Dan Whitehall, our Public Works Director. We're going to be having a discussion about capital projects. And then Linda's gonna take us through, along with Brad, um, information about our frequently asked questions. Uh, we also have a proposed amendment to council rules of procedure. Tom is going to take us through that. And then, uh, Linda will have a piece to say about conversations with counselors and then we should be adjourning. So it is a work session, not a session for public comment, but a work session where we get together and can speak in a little more, uh, less formal, uh, atmosphere than we run during the monthly council meetings to talk about things we need to learn more about and prepare. So that's our focus for this afternoon and beautiful sunny Manzanita. I'm going to turn it over to Leila and to Dan for capital discussion. So please go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you. So Dan is going to pull together PowerPoint and kind of walk us through, through our discussion today, but what we're, what we're hoping to do today really is give you all a sense of the capital projects that we, uh, expect to complete over the next year or so. Really the next fiscal year. So effectively it's what Dan and I have been working on in the budget. So I think what we'd like to do is kind of describe those projects. There's one project in particular that there's a couple of variations and staff has a recommendation for that. And so we want to kind of take the temperature of the council um, about our approach. And if there's concern, kind of knowing that now will be helpful for us in, you know, finalizing the, the budget, um, because these all have implications for how we budget for next year. So. So how about Dan? Why don't you go ahead and just start with the PowerPoint and then I can kind of provide color commentary and context, uh, throughout. Um, but what Dan's going to do is I think you should be okay to share your screen unless someone, we need to let you, okay? Maybe Nancy, you can.
I need that all from the powers. There we go. All right, everybody can see it all right?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So yeah, we're going to talk about, uh, our CIP and it is, it's a, it is a big lift. Every year we do it, we review it, see where prices are, what projects are coming up and what things are, because the CIP is a living document. And so case for folks in the background that might not know what CIP is, it stands for Capital Improvement Plan. So essentially this is a great description of it. It outlines to us as city staff and to the city and stuff. You know, what are we looking at to build, design? We have to, what we have to fund and capital improvement plans can be as short as five years and as long as 30 years, depending on the complexity of your capital improvement plan. So for Manzanita, we have plans or projects that go way into the future past five years, but we concentrate on the five-year outlook to see where we are going to be. So as Leila said, we're going to be looking at the main construction year this coming year. So we've got two big, big projects and another project that's decent size, but it's one that's shared across both my table and definitely across Leila and you guys' councils, uh, uh, table. And that's the twentieth plenty, or as I was calling it earlier, twenty is enough. I think I'll start calling it plenty enough. Sorry, inside joke with Leila on that one. So, so one of the projects we, I want to talk about is Classic Street North. In the past, you guys have heard me talk about projects being, projects of opportunity. And this was a great project of opportunity here with the construction of City Hall and the requirements of some of the road work that was required by City Hall to be done. We don't want to leave an old water main in the ground, pave over it with nice pavement and road construction and go, oh, hey, in a couple more years, let's go ahead and tear that road back up. Um, it, it's a process that got eliminated honestly years ago from the city of doing such kind of concepts because it's throwing away money. So part of this is what runs down Classic Street now, which is phase one is what we're looking at. Phase two is something in the future that will help, uh, some traffic and control issues, but we're going to concentrate on phase one. So what's in there right now? Well, it's a mixture of two inch and one inch water pipe. I'm not going to call it water main because water mains have to be a minimum of four inches. And so that's, it goes in there, it dead, it dead ends at some point. We're not entirely sure where it runs, uh, most of the way up the road because it's old service line. It kind of wanders around. Um, there is no storm in that area. There is no, uh, road as far as like a road base or asphalt. So I think most everybody that's been out to the site has, has noticed it's just kind of a really wavy gravel lump. But this, to do what we need to do, part of the project is, like I said, is they're going to construct some road work. Well, we have some work that we need to do, which is include, um, of installing a six-inch water main about a hundred feet up the road. And then we're going to reduce it down to a four inch and cap it off just past with the, the project limits that are for the, for the City Hall project. The part of phase two, though, will be taking that water main all the way up to North Avenue and tying into the water main there. Because the other thing is the water system, we don't like dead ends. And so this also creates a redundancy for us because at, at the top, it's, it's the high system is what we call it. And so it's another system. So if we should have a failure in the high system or the low system, it creates an access point to be able to move water between systems of our own systems in, in there. The, this project also though, um, it includes, uh, like I said, doing asphalt and road. It doesn't include doing any uh, gutter work or storm drain systems at this time. That's something later on we can come back and put back in, uh, when we do like phase two. The water mains though, we're sticking with what we did on Carmel and Dorcas, or not, sorry, not Carmel, but on, uh, South Forest Street and Dorcas. And we are going to be using HDPE. So the resilient, let it, if it moves, the ground moves a little bit, the water pipe can move. So unlike PVC, that's, it's okay pipe and that's what majority of our system is. But it's definitely way, way better than asbestos stuff. So, which is one of our primary goals to get rid of. So a cost kind of breakdown of, of the project. So because it's coming up in the next year, you can see how it breaks down as far as construction, engineering, planning, and where the funds essentially for the project are coming out of. So, and that, that essentially covers all of North Street. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
Uh, question, Dan. So this looks to me like it is for the water infrastructure. This, at this point, it's not to pave Classic Street. This is just to get the infrastructure in.
This is to get the water infrastructure in and some of the, some of the, the rock and stuff above the water main, where we would have to typically replace it. That's part of it. But this is not doing a full street. It is doing a half street, but the half street part of it also falls under the City Hall project.
So that will, as the City Hall project moves forward, asphalt will be put down instead of just gravel.
Yes, and it will not be.
Today, as I remember, if I turned there, I can get a bit past the Thai restaurant and that rental place. And then there's sort of a dead end. Is that eventually going to go all the way through?
Well, let me go back to previous slide. So yeah, so phase one takes you up to what essentially just past to what's Pine Road, right below the word phase one, there's actually a, a right of way through there. And then eventually, yes, we are looking at phase two, which would be to essentially create a travel path all the way up to north.
So we'd actually be able to turn, go north and get all the way through instead of having to go to the next street and awesome. Thank you.
So let me bounce back down. Any other questions, thoughts on this?
But so Dan, I'm sure, I think, uh, we'll, we'll get a lot of questions about, uh, phase two and obviously you're not, I don't think you're able to commit at this point, but do you have a rough timeframe for when we get to phase two?
No. No, we don't really have a, a timeframe. We have a rough idea of what we would like to do there. And so it really would, uh, essentially work, what we're looking at, and Leila can smack me if I'm speaking out of terms, but we're looking at trying to do is push a one lane through that area, create parking, um, for the, the field use and essentially create the bicycle path through there. So it would really alleviate, once it's done, a lot of pressure that's on the intersection of Division and North. And over the years, I've received lots of complaints about that, that intersection. So I think it would, I think it would be a great big help and uh, I didn't think about honestly going through and I have to give credit to Leila. She's like, well, what happens if we just put parking in the lane through? And I says, oh my goodness, you're a genius lady. So someday, and, and because though, you know, it is one of the things that's on our, on our traffic or in our transportation plan, yeah, it kept on the traffic safety plan, uh, on our transportation plan. And the things we want to do, I think it a lot, will allow for a lot more access to a different funding availability through grants and things like that. Anybody else?
Yeah. So Dan, uh, you, so we're not, are we paving the, that yellow part?
We are going to pave 11-foot wide, uh, sloth of it. So a half is considered a half, half a lane. It's a full road travel or one width of, of lane, but it's only considered half road. So half road paved.
And there'd be, there'd be a way to have cars going in and out from the parking lot and, uh,
Yeah. It's still have lots of gravel shoulders and stuff.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, I can't wait to pave that whole thing. I think that's a great idea. Uh, and we usually do water and storm water at the same time to save money. Is the reason that we're not doing storm, the storm water, uh, because it's not a full road, not finishing it in order to put it all the way through, we're going to put a, for lack of a better term, a real road all the way through. And that's when the storm water will come?
Yeah. Okay. And there could be something later on, if, you know, we find out we're running way underneath estimates, then, you know, we'll, we'll see what we might be able to do. But right now I couldn't commit to anything other than what we are actually got going.
Okay. Well, it seems like a good, it seems like a good solution.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're building, just so you know, as part of the City Hall project, as Dan mentioned, uh, we're carrying the road. Well, it's, it's a driveway in this condition. So, but we're building it to a road standard so that when the time comes for us to complete the project being the Classic Street extension to North, that section of the, that driveway then becomes road, right? So we're not building it to, a driveway standard's different than a road standard. So I just, we're trying to be really efficient. So we're, you know, kind of putting in a little piece of this part of the puzzle so that later we can come in and we don't have to rip anything out. We can just add to it. That was the, the goal.
Well, that seems.
Yeah. And that part is being carried in the City Hall construction budget.
Okay, okay. That's good to know.
Yeah.
Anybody, any more, more questions?
Catherine, I think, are you asking? It might be. I always have to do it once, once a meeting.
Just the one. So yeah, I've got kind of a comment and a question. I just want to make, um, sure I'm clear. So I understand the, uh, what's the language that you use, Dan? A project of opportunity?
Yes.
Yeah. Cause we've talked about that because, um, when you're up to one thing and you can get another piece of work done that fits in and, you know, that's good and it's smart in terms of solving kind of the big jigsaw puzzle we have of, of projects. Um, when we, and I understand then why this is being, let me, so I, I want to make, I want to check my understanding on why this is being put forth. So let me kind of say what I would assume now, and you tell me if I'm on the right path. So because we've got the City Hall work going and because we have an opportunity to deal with a piece of our water system at the same time and help us be more efficient the next, for the next project, we're choosing this. We're also choosing this because it's a relatively small project and within our capacity to deliver. Um, we've talked about the fact in past that even if we had, you know, even if we had the money to do some things, we might be short on resources to do them well, given the size of staff that we have to do the project. So that's a limiting factor on how fast and how soon we can get some of these capital projects done. I think the twentieth plenty work will be distinct enough that I'm going to ask the question now. So if we weren't doing this particular piece, do you, do you know, or could you tell us kind of what, what's getting deferred then, or, you know, what else might we have done? So in other words, the opportunity costs. So we're doing this and we're investing this. And the result of that is that we're deferring something else until the following year. So I don't know if that's a question you can answer right now, or maybe we could come back to that, um, in a follow-up.
I would say we're really not deferring anything because these fundings that we're putting out for the project are essentially from the, for the water side of it. So these are funds that, one, we have built into our S, as part of our SDC. But it's also funds that we use from our water maintenance fund, which is part of the road, or essentially part of the water when you, sorry, part of the water fees that we get, we collect from water usage. So our, our water metering. So help pay to replace service lines. So that's what we're doing. Um, by doing this, what's it really offsetting? Just a little bit of funds, maybe from another project that would be down the road. But I can't, unless Leila has something she can think of, I can't think of anything. It would be deferring really away.
No, I think if I understood the question, maybe it's, would we have done other projects in lieu of this one? I don't know. This coming fiscal year. And my guess is that maybe there would have been other, maybe a line or two that's on the next list we'll talk about that we would have replaced that we're not because we're doing this one instead. I can see that maybe we're trading one line maintenance repair for another as being that trade-off. Um, but I think because of taking on the larger capital project, that we didn't have any plans to do any major capital projects other than the one that Dan will talk about next, which is the, the Classic Street South. But that's a great question. So I, I think, would that be a fair answer, Dan, to say that we're just kind of doing this one instead of maybe another maintenance project that would have been done?
Yeah, I, that's really, really fair. And I would add too, is any project bigger than this small one, on top of the one we're going to talk about next, the bandwidth to be able to handle that would have been impossible for me. So something small added onto something really big.
So isn't it, isn't it also part of the, it's the way we have access to the employee parking? So that, I mean, that's, that's pretty critical in terms of, it's small, but it's a critical piece.
Yeah. And there's probably some efficiencies built into this particular project too, because of the design that's going on with the, uh, the civil engineering going on with the driveway access. So Dan's kind of already involved in that already. Um, so it's not insignificant, but it's not a huge project. And I think, um, with Dan's participation in the City Hall project, it should go off pretty well. So. Do we help? Not kind of like, okay. All right. So I see kind of general like, all right, this feels okay. Um, go on to the big one next, the drumroll, please. Big project that we're all kind of super psyched about.
Yep, that, that's a big project area. And it is, I'm actually super excited about this project because the benefits of it impact us in multiple ways, all, and pretty much everyone is a positive. So essentially what we're going to be talking about is Classic Street South from Lenita all the way down to Nakarni City Road, which is the area in red. And then you have this little, uh, goofy line here that's in orange, essentially, which is another water main. Uh, we're going to talk about that bypasses the Pine Ridge area to essentially cut down some loopage. So when I say loopage, uh, we'll talk about that a little more in a second here. Uh, so current conditions, I always like to talk about current things. So what do we have? You guys have all been in and out of the Classic Street area. You know, it's not the greatest thing in the world. So there is no water mains between essentially Dorcas and Highlands Drive. So it's a, just a big vast area. Um, we work off a large loop system. And we lack, we lack a lot of flow to, uh, potential out in our urban growth boundary areas, especially in on the very south side of our city limits even. And so this does not allow for a lot of essentially growth out there. We've got tons of water in storage. We have tons of water in production that we have no problems, but getting it out there to the very ends is tough. And this is not uncommon. Other cities have the same thing. The further away you get from your reservoirs, the lower your flow rates are unless you start adding and putting in larger lines. So the storm system, there is a small little storm gutter system that runs from Lenita down to Dorcas along the west side. And then when the developer did the Highlands and put in some storm stuff, he opted to actually install concrete gutter from Highlands Drive all the way down to where Ridge Drive is. So he's already done some of the work for us. And that wasn't required of him. He just chose to do it. So. And then we have this area in yellow. So I wanted to point this out because what happens is storm water that comes down from essentially, uh, down Classic Street and from Lenita all the way over towards the west. My, even though my box encompasses, uh, 101, we don't get any storm water from 101. I just want to make sure I point that out. But all that water comes out at the very south side where you see that red arrow and comes out of a grate that comes out of the ground and then just pools alongside Classic Street. So that essentially is our, kind of our hodgepodge storm system of that area. Um, the road conditions, um, you have essentially, we have 20 feet of paved area from Dorcas down to, to Nakarni City Road. Some places are a little bit smaller than 20 feet. But our typical residential roadway is 20 feet, two 10-foot paved lanes. And so as most of you have heard too, that the pavement is very, very thin. Some places two inches, some places I've actually seen it a little thinner. Um, so there's not a lot of great asphalt there. It's held up tremendously for the amount of years it has been there and the amount of traffic that's been on it. And, and that's one of the things that I've been talking with, uh, with our city kind of engineer about. One thing I've observed is that the fact that that road base has held up so, so well. And road base has a direct effect on asphalt. So if we were starting to see asphalt start to crumble and fall apart, usually that tells you that there's a road base problem. So one of the things we're looking at on this is we're going to have a geotech engineer come in and actually shoot the road where they're going to punch holes in it in places. Look at the makeup of it and we might be able to essentially not have to do, a lot of times what we do is rebuild a road base that don't, does not exist. So you guys remember Dorcas before we did it, how bad it was, real wavy and uneven? So it didn't have a road base and it, it faltered quick, but yet Classic hasn't. So that is one of the big positives we're looking at is not having to, uh, to rebuild that whole road base in that area. So we have objectives that, that essentially we're setting forth. So what, what is it on Classic we want to do? And, you know, this comes from, from, you know, people from like myself saying, hey, I'd like to see this, this done, the public, other departments, and some of the things we're shooting for is one is improve the water flow for the outer water system. We also want to add redundancies from the water system is making more pathways. If there is a failure in the water system, we want to do is be able to redirect and close off valves to keep majority of everybody with water. Um, we also want to improve the drainage along Classic. Right now it puddles up on both sides. It has been kind of puddling up, especially along the west side, which will cause the asphalt to kind of unravel on that edge a little bit. So we want to improve Classic for travel purposes for vehicles, so make it safer. And then the, one of the biggest things that I know most people are filled really strongly about is we want to improve the pedestrian and bike travel along Classic. We get a lot of people that walk that road and I know you guys have been talked to many a times about that, that road, about it being how safe, how unsafe it is for people to be on it. So those were the objectives we, we set forth. We wanted something that would fit all those boxes and check them all. So we came up with three options. So the option number one is to install a brand new HDPE line from Lenita Avenue all the way down essentially to tie back in with Nakarni City Road. So if you look on that map there, you'll see it starts up under the word Manzanita, even though that's Lenita Avenue, and it comes all the way down. The other line is outside of the city limits because that orange line, that's our city limits. And then the purple line is our urban growth boundary. So everything inside that purple area, we provide water to. And so the bypasses, I was saying, which would go and bypass essentially the Pine Ridge area is that other little red line you see outside the orange, but inside the purple area. So part of the project would be to reconstruct the road surface of Dorcas Lane. We're going to get that 22-foot wide. That's that two, two 11-foot travel path, travel lanes. Pave a eight-foot walking and bicycle path. And so that would go all the way from Lenita Avenue all the way down to Nakarni City. So we would have a nice wide pathway throughout that whole area. And then a storm system with gutters to catch all the storm water runoff of Classic Street. So there are some pros and cons I wanted to talk about. One is the area in yellow will see a, a greatly increase in water volume out there. Not water pressure, but volume. So in volume translations, if we have a high flow event saved by a fire department, usually your water pressure would drop. But if you have a volume there, the fire department's not overtaking, your pressure in your water system stays up. And kind of rough modelings we've looked at is a lot of our water flow out in that area will, would literally double. And that's good for a water system. It's good for growth. So now we can handle, we would be able to handle the additional housing that's going out there. We can handle the additional, uh, workforce housing that's also wanting to go out there and just growth in general. So, uh, a paved path, like I said, along Classic Street, eight foot wide, that's a huge, you know, benefit. Um, travel lanes, this also would knock some projects off the transportation, uh, system plan. We would complete literally two of the projects on there and halfway complete one of the other ones. Um, the M9 project, why we were only completing half of it is because the next stretch of that. is because the next stretch of that is to go from Lenita to Manzanita Avenue. And so, so it completes a lot of big stuff. And once again, a storm system that handles all the overflow. So cost is a con. It's the most expensive process to do all this, but it is, it would be a completed, a fully completed project. And the other con is the disturbance area because this is classic street. It's a heavily used road. And so for about a, about a year, we're going to be taking it way down, you know, and doing work on it. So parts of it will be closed at times. So people would have to kind of use alternative routes while we, while we work through the redoing that road. And we've had this problem before with things like that. Remember Carmel when it was being constructed on? That's a, a major thoroughfare. But we have to, we make concessions as part of the development of it. Any questions on, on this option? Any thoughts?
And, um, I think we're probably all excited about the possibility of the walking path. And every time I think about it, I'm on that road a lot. And so I assume it would butt up against the retaining wall that runs along the cottages. And, um, and that's great. I'm just trying to envision how you get eight feet of walking path unless you somehow extend, uh, the road a little bit further towards the golf course. Is that part of the deal or is, or is my math off?
Uh, it's not off, but it's a split. So under opportu, I have a slide that's coming up as opportunities uh, given, but I'll touch on it now is, uh, both the, the cottages and Encore properties are willing to give us easements to place a water main down through that area. So what we would be doing as part of this project is excavating back into the, the toe and installing a, one of those essentially block walls. So we would push the one block wall that you see there back.
Okay.
And then extend its heights probably one more block. So we get a nice, we get, we get the, the actual full width in there. So.
Right.
And there are spots though, Jerry, we are going to have to try to shift the road towards just as best we can. So, because that's one of the, the things, there's another slide coming up is we didn't have the opportunity to pass is we don't have anywhere to put that walking path until literally the cottages came and said, hey, what, what can we do to help? We won't, can we give you a property care, an easement or something? And so, and that's where the process started going, oh, wow, we have a great opportunity here.
Perfect. Okay.
Dan, I've, I've got a question. I was going to ask about, uh, the workforce housing, but you already mentioned that this will support that forthcoming project. Uh, my question related to that is any of the infrastructure, the 2.7 million we were awarded, is that being used in this project or is that a separate project?
No, that's part of this project. I'll let Leila talk a little bit about the appropriations.
Yeah, that's a great question. So yes, so the, the, this project is includes that. So, uh, there's a couple of options. So we went through, Dan and I were already planning on bringing a scaled down version of the classic street project to the council for this year's CIP. Um, and that's where we started our discussions with the cottages and with Encore properties to talk about this easement option. And, uh, that's kind of how we ended up in, in the place that we are now. When we realized we got the appropriation to actually do the full project, Dan and I sat down and said, okay. It's rare you get an opportunity like this where you get the majority of funding you need to do the biggest project on the city's books outside of city hall. So let's look at this and see what we can do and what we need to, like, what would be the best project we could put forward to leverage the needed housing, right? That's the intent behind the legislative appropriation is that it will leverage needed housing, not just income restricted rate, but all housing. And you can see from the project that's right here in front of us, that this project will have a significant impact on the city's ability to provide water service to the urban growth boundary to provide needed housing. And so what, what we've come up with is what we think is, and we'll talk about it later, but we are going to recommend that we move forward with this option because it's just such a unique opportunity in the way that we've structured the funding, um, we can do it. We can actually do it for more than half the price that we were anticipating doing a scaled down version of this project before we got the appropriation. Does that make sense? So we were anticipating spending about 1.3 to one, proposing a project that was about 1.4 million just to get the main water line in and the gravel trail. Now we're looking at doing the entire project. And what I'm modeling right now is that the water fund, um, would fund about $590,000 of this, this bill. So, and then the general fund would cover, I think, another hundred thousand. So that'll all be dialed in in the budget. But for our investment, we can leverage almost four times the amount grant funding and actually get this huge project knocked out. So. It's a very long answer to your simple question.
That is a very good answer and I completely agree with, uh, combining it with that's going to end up giving us a full project instead of a partial project. Uh, I know you guys have considered it, but just, um, any impacts you think about the potential or the hotel project that's going to be going on right there? To either side, to the folks that may start working on that or the road, we just move forward or?
Are you mean conflicting with their construction?
Yeah, I don't think any permits or anything have been issued or timeline, but I'm just thinking, uh, if both are going at the same time, we might be button heads a bit with a project that big.
I trust Dan is super good at coordination.
Well, that's, coordination and actually Brad, it would probably be a, a benefit with, uh, with them doing what they're doing. For the mere reason, like, if we put the water main and everything, we don't coordinate with them and then they come back and say, hey, we need to tie in. So we have to cut your brand new beautiful street uh, into that intersection to put something in. That's what, those are the things I try to avoid. So I think timing wise with us, I think we'll be able to coordinate with them because I think they're going to be coming back from what I understand soon or they're already working with the, the, the planning commission on that. So I think it'll, it'll jive together really well.
Yeah. And they're working with the building department on their permits. So.
You guys are on top of it as always. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Well, I know, I know Dan is Superman. There's no question about that. Uh, in terms of what you're doing, is there any, uh, is this going to be kind of as time consuming as the Dorcas project? Um, I, and I know you thought about this in terms of building city, city hall, a major project, that's two major projects that Dan is just incredibly responsible for. Uh, and, uh, have you, kind of, what's the timing on this? I'm, how are you kind of coordinating both of those two things?
So that's one of the things I was saying about the slide before with that other project being a small project and as far as additions. It's just that, because this will be a big project. Um, it will be bigger, it will be bigger than the, the Dorcas project. Um, I would say it's, it would, it's going to be smaller than the door, than the Carmel project, just because the Carmel project, as you guys remember, the contractor filed bankruptcy halfway through our project.
Wow.
That was a super nightmare. So, um, the beauty part about this is honestly, there's a lot of ground out there that's really untouched by other utilities. So this project, as far as my part of it, it'll be a lot of work, but it's a lot of new ground. So it should go very smoothly. So.
And as far. Budgets to make sure too, right, Dan, that you have much like I have on city hall, right? Have Jesse to help project manage. Dan's engineer tends to serve that project management role. And we'll be going out for competitive design because the, we're estimating the contract to require that kind of procurement. Um, I'm actually going to be working on this project too. So Dorcas was designed. Uh, this project is not yet designed and there's a fair amount of, uh, roadway improvements that really require some urban design input. And so I'll actually be working on this with Dan through the kind of 30% design engineering process. So we'll be supporting each other throughout this. We've got solid team on city hall. Um, you know, it's definitely a big lift for both of us, but I think this is where you know, we've, we've had a good year in the sense of an embarrassment of riches, right? Like we got awesome people applying for the co-plan. Now we've got all this money. We just got to figure out how to make it work. And Dan and I, I feel confident will. That means we'll have to adjust some other expectations on other workload matters so that we can deliver these two um, really critically important projects. So I feel good about it.
Yeah. So one of the things I have to say for me is, you know, I've done a lot of street projects with the city over the years and hey, they're great projects. This one I am truly excited about, especially when it is done and having that walking path. And once again, the biggest part also because I wear two hats in the community is the amount of water flow that this will greatly improve in our outer area. So as, as funny as that might sound, and I can nerd out about it, but it's it's a big increase to the, the, the flow abilities. So.
That, that's great. I, you know, I, I trust that you both can do a great job on it. I just want to make sure that we kind of plan ahead, which I know you do. One, one of the other things I just want to compliment Dan on, um, I remember when classic was put in and we expected it to last maybe five to eight years. And that's like 17 or 18 years ago. And the fact that you are taking it back, the fact that it has lasted this long is kind of a miracle. And the fact that you're looking at utilizing that and not having to kind of redo everything. Um, I really appreciate your, your thoughtfulness about that. I think that's, uh, I think that's important. And I think that was a, a very intuitive and smart decision to make, uh, that has the potential of saving a lot of money. So thank you for that. That's, that was excellent.
So any other questions on option one? All right, then I might jump. Yeah. The other two options are going to look real bad now after this one.
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe we don't need to go to the other two options.
So let's talk about the option number two. Option number two is, is more of a boiled down version. Um, you can see the area of impact for the water main because we would still be doing the water main from Lenita all the way to Nakarni. We won't be doing that subpiece that's needed. So it does have a pretty good impact on the availability of how far that water can reach out there. So that area is, is a lot smaller. Um, we would still do a reconstruct of the asphalt surfaces between Dorcas Lane and Nakarni, shooting for the 22-foot wide travel path. The walking path though would be gravel instead of asphalt. Um, the storm drain system would still go in to be able to catch the water flow. So it kind of really shrinks down our, what we're doing. Um, the pros to it is once again, there is a, there is an increase to the water. Um, I don't think it's going to produce the, as much water out into where like the workforce housing is going. The modeling is showing that it's, it reduces. So they'll probably have to do some, some work on what they want to do and that could create a roadblock. So um, the project still meets the travel lanes, uh, for this, uh, for the, I put traffic safety, but it's transportation plan. So. And then, uh, storm, once again, it still would handle all the storm water runoff. Uh, cons to it, cost, it's still a pretty expensive project, not as quite as expensive as doing option one. The disturbance area is still pretty good size because we're still talking about taking classic street offline. Uh, and then, but you have also maintenance issues. So you have a, a gravel walking path. So that means every so often, public works is going to have to go out there and regrade a, a pathway. And then, once again, the biggest one for me is with this option is the, the water availability, how it affects the rest of the systems. So it does help, but does not get as far out as we'd like to see it. So any questions on this option?
Muted.
Unmute, there we go. Okay. Um, so, um, Dan, one of the things that you're talking about is concerned about how much flow is going to go out to the workforce, uh, housing addition. Is, uh, can the expense associated with getting the water out there, uh, be, uh, uh, charged as a system development charge? Uh, as another way to get funding to get the mo, water out to that?
That is a good question. And yes, that's why, um, in option one, uh, Leila said that she was going to bring funds in from that, that essentially that funding to be able to offset the costs for those additional line work. So. Did I, am I right on that, Leila? I'll let you explain it better.
Exactly. So if you notice, the price difference is about 600,000. And so that's what we proposed for option one. Uh, the SDC funds to cover that additional bit.
So I know we're, um, we're we're early into this at this point. So, um, when it comes to the question of how adequate the flow might be, uh, are we far enough along to know that it would still be doable? Because I mean, the whole point of the funds rests on our ability to support more housing. The biggest element of housing, which hasn't happened yet, and we're not, I mean, so this is sort of threading a couple of needles at the same time, you know, trying to get to an end, but for, if a con to this is that we aren't going to have enough to deal with the couple of projects that we think could be happening, then I guess in my simple mind, I'm thinking then we don't have the, we're not going to get the funds this 2.7 to do it because that's the whole point of getting the money from the state. So. So is this an actual option or is it a kind of a non-option that sounds like an option really? I didn't phrase that very well, but hopefully you got the gist of that, Leila.
I would put it this way, um, it is, it is an option, but it will require the developer to do more work on their end. So they might have to extend mains from their side more. Um, it would also mean probably some different requirements for the fire department. So water modeling, it shows that it's, it's essentially pretty, pretty close, but not where you're like for sure where I would bet the farm, Catherine. That's the best way I can put it. And once again, my, my opinion on it is the fact that I'm not looking at just workforce housing. I mean, that's a huge thing. But I'm looking at the overall health of the whole water system. Because the other piece to my, in my puzzle of looking forward amongst things is we do have a water project coming up um, in the next coming years, that's along the highway 101. And so that means we will be taking the 101 main offline to do switchovers and things like that. And that would cut our loop. And without having essentially bypass lines and things like that in, it also makes it that as we're doing that work, if there's a problem somewhere else, then essentially we can cut a large chunk of the city off from water while there's a, a repair. So this, like I said, it adds so many bonus pieces to it. But for the workforce housing, like I said, I think it, the way it looks, it gets us, you know, right to the cusp of it. But they just might will have to do some more site work as far as extension of mains and surprise fire suppression things.
And Dan, I think you mentioned for whoever is selected to contract for the workforce housing, this may be a go, no-go block if it's not done correctly. Or as extensively as option one, it could, it could reduce our capabilities of that development or narrow down our choices.
Yeah. I mean, I think option one gives us the greatest opportunity to leverage housing. Clearly. Now we can also think about this too in, in pieces and I don't want to confuse folks, right? So I want to make sure we kind of keep it um, focused, but there is this street improvement we keep talking about. So there's an ability to plug and play a little bit. We could do less on the road improvement. We could defer the road improvement entirely. And I think that that's the next option is deferring the road improvement. And then you could build the water lines and do all of that and do a gravel path. So there's, there's options to make it work. I think for, in my opinion, there's, there's options to make it work. I think for, in my opinion, and just after going through what we've been able to do in the time that we've had, it feels like putting in that extra sort of booster line. Um, it really just, it really sets the stage for our city to send the message that we are ready for housing. Because it, it, it essentially activates that entire UGB to the level of confidence that Dan's talking about. We can still accomplish it here, but the potential for it to cause additional costs to the project are greater. Um, we can also modify this to do less improvement on, um, the car, on Classic so that we can then pay for the, the line extension. So if you think about it, that there's sort of a couple of pieces here. Um, but we think with the, you know, it's not insignificant to dedicate six hundred thousand dollars of SDCs for system expansion, but what better project for system expansion than activation for housing in our urban growth boundary? That we really wanted to put forward the full project. And then we can adjust as we've learned through the city hall project as the design progresses and we start to actually learn more about costs. So it's just kind of understanding what are the general values, what is most important to you? Um, so that we can then adjust the project, um, to meet those goals. Hopefully that's helpful.
It is. Um, and I was also thinking, hopefully I'm not off base here. Is it possible to use any restricted TLT funds since we're actually creating a bike and pedestrian path that could be useful for tourism?
Yeah, there's certainly some potential to use that as a funding gap tool. Um, it couldn't pay for the, so the water infrastructure and Dan, I don't know if you have the project budget broken down, but, um, that it would have to be limited to the trail portion of the project, which I, I don't think is huge. Um, so, you know, it wouldn't offset that cost too much. And we are using those funds for kind of operational things for our visitor center too. So I'm not, um, so I think we can find other funding sources for it. We probably should, but the federal appropriation, the state appropriation should help cover most of the road related. That's a good point. Going to pop to the last one, just to kind of show folks the range of options and then we can.
All right. So option number three. So, yep. Option, so option number three is we do water. And pretty much we don't do anything on the roadside of it. We do put some storm in. And the pathway, once again, is gravel. Uh, there's very few pros to it. I mean, large increase to water. Once again, we get the, the whole water area, which is a benefit to me. Um, we do some, uh, improvements to the travel area, essentially where the road is less than twenty feet, we can fill in along the edge, but essentially this project to get this funding in, um, in this window is not a lot of roadwork. Lots of cons to it. Road condition will ma- will remain close to what it is now. Like I said, the storm that goes in won't be able to catch all the water because the current road is pitched in all different directions. And it's not graded, but at least there would be some type of storm system in there to facilitate future work. And then, once again, another con is we're taking care of a gravel little pathway. And then we still would have to come back in the future to redo the reconstruct. And so when you start breaking projects apart, uh, you know, especially this size, the cost goes up. And so we will be paying, of course, also future inflation costs of construction. So, so option three puts us right in that appropriation money, but all we're getting out of it is just pretty much water, the water project part of it.
Which is pretty great. I mean, I do want to, that is amazing. Like if we just built this and we didn't spend a penny of SDCs, like this is amazing. Um, so I, you know, I, I'm with Dan, but I also want to emphasize that any of these options, I mean, we didn't think we were going to be able to do this for at least five years. So I just, I don't want to discount that. Cause this does provide the, the water flow in to the UGB that we need. It doesn't get us, you know, the, the roadway that we want, but we can build something that can get us there. So a lower cost version of that, there'll be traffic calming on Classic Street and a gravel pathway. Um, you know, those would be great options, but I think, um, as Dan noted, we have an opportunity. So what we're, what we're recommending, I think is the next slide is that first option. But I think if you decide to do something different, there's, there will be a great outcome no matter what. I do think that the water capacity is sort of top of the line in terms of what we need to be able to demonstrate that this funding will, um, result in, you know, it's not up to us to build that housing. It's not up to us to, you know, bring those developers in. But if we're able to just sort of lay it out there for them and say, okay, we've done our part. Um, that's, I think would be really beneficial to our region and to the state.
Yeah. And so once again, just the opportunities that have been presented to us, the two point seven million direct appropriation, the fact that we have two entities willing to essentially give us easements. And the other thing is where were we a year ago? That's one of the things that, you know, we've kind of talked about. This project was, when you looked at the CIP, it showed the costs and then the main thing underneath it, other than the water side of it was all unfunded. And so, so, and we honestly, in the previous designs and the years ago, we didn't have the opportunity to put a walking path in. Now with this opportunity within Corinems, we do have at least the opportunity for that. So the staff recommendation, it's, you know, it's my recommendation. I know Leila feels the same is the, about option one. It literally has the most opportunity for a large impact, positive impact to the system, the water system, the traffic, the transportation safety plan. So traffic safety and pedestrian safety, bike safety. I mean, it's just all there. Um, I've all listed it here. It's just like, uh, the other one. It kind of gives you a little bit of breakdown of what, where the costs are and how they, how they essentially come out for the option one. Any questions, thoughts?
Dan?
So the, the rough, just very, very rough, uh, timeframe of the, just the projects in general. Would you say commencing when, finishing when?
So this one is slated to right now, if we started as we are kind of where we are, um, continue on this path, I believe off the top of my head, it was September of twenty-five was the completion date.
Yeah, let me, I'll pull up that.
I'd say it was at the very beginning of the slide.
It's about a year and a half.
Yep, about a year and a half. Um, and it all depends too on the contractor. That's the maximum time. And so most of these are laid out Catherine in a way that it's, I call it the Scotty method. You know, for some reason Scotty always said it would take five, six days to fix the enterprise, but it was done in about two or three days. So.
For clarifying that, I'd forgotten that. Yes. Um, is there any, is there any time limitation on the, the grant monies, Leila, from the state?
We don't know yet. I don't know yet. I know that time is of the essence. So it, so I don't know. Um, we'll learn more, I think, once the governor finally signs the bill on me. But I think it is something that they expect to be, um, ready to go. And so I do want to note that because we did a CIP and we charged through all of this stuff and really were prepared, uh, and had a capital improvement plan that when we got the request for this, we were able to respond really quickly. Um, so it's just, that's why this kind of planning is so important. Um, but I do think that one of the things my understanding as the governor is prioritizing projects that can be executed fairly quickly. Um, and ours can. I mean, I think that eighteen month timeline also includes, um, procurement, because we have to go through, uh, competitive process to get an engineer to design it. And then we have to go competitive bid. So those things add time. The state should appreciate that since they set the rules.
Yeah, yeah.
But as soon as I learn more about that, I'll, I'll let you know.
Yeah, it sounds like there's still things evolving based on how quickly that, the funds got approved. And then I know, I don't know the details of it, but I know some things got pulled that were approved. And so it sounds like there's still a bit of a vetting process going on, um, with the state. So, which is good because, which is a good thing. You want to make sure everything goes to the right place and is used as it was intended.
Absolutely. Yeah. And we provided a good thorough response to their quest. So hopefully it'll stay on their list.
Yeah. So could you talk for a minute about, um, the different processes that would be needed to do this thing properly? So, uh, budget funding process, city council process, planning commission process, and particularly public input. How would that work for something of this scale?
Yeah. So from a budget perspective, if we get kind of general consensus that around an auction, um, I will budget for it. And, you know, and let's say worst case scenario, we get cut from the governor's list. Now, we may have already budgeted for it. Uh, but we can adjust. So there will probably be a different approach to the project that we would put forward. Um, so I just kind of want to note that, that like if the roof comes down, Dan and I were already kind of working down a path to see how we could pull this off. What was the second part of your question?
Well, it had to do with everybody else that's involved and, and I, let me just back up. It's really, my, the kernel, the heart of my question is about the public input. Um, and how that works for a capital project of this size and scope. We've got, you know, we've got relationships with, uh, two different parties, the, the homeowners associate. I won't get the technical terms right, so you can straighten me out on that. But the homeowners association, backup at Classic cottages, got the developer, uh, Jim Pence and his group who could be potentially part of this. We've listened to a lot of feedback and input for, um, regarding vehicle and pedestrian safety along that road. Um, but like any other projects, you know, some people will come with their concerns, et cetera. So what is, what is the public comment and input process look like for this kind of a project?
Yeah, we can talk about that. We haven't, you know, gotten that far down the track. But I imagine what, what I would imagine for a project like this is having uh, an open house or some sort of online or some sort of way to share the cross section design. So the transportation system plan actually sets forth what the street cross section should look like. So that kind of policy, um, is already in place. And so our engineer will design a cross section based on already adopted policy that was developed through a really rigorous outreach process that's based on community input. So we'll be glad to kind of create an opportunity for folks to share in that, um, and receive feedback and comment on it. But, um, that's probably the extent that I would imagine we would go in terms of getting input and feedback. Um, we'll do informationals. Dan does a really good job getting information out around specific projects. But an engineering project like this, you know, folks aren't going to necessarily weigh in on where the water line goes and all of those things. Um, we will be independently working with the HOA at the cottages to establish a memorandum of understanding so that their concerns, issues, all of that stuff is addressed and documented. So kind of process wise, I think the way the things will work is assuming we get the money. I just read, we need to basically, it needs to result in housing within five years. I think we're in that timeframe. Um, we would do an RFP, uh, we would select an engineer. Um, that engineer would, contract would come to city council for approval. Once that engineer is underway, we would develop the timeline and a scope and that engineer would start working on design. Um, the design has certain milestones, kind of like what we just went through with city hall. Uh, they're a little different for engineering. So we would be providing updates to city council on that in cost estimates. So similar to kind of like what we did with city hall, but on a real rapid timeframe, um, we'll give you cost estimate updates. And, um, probably at those milestone points would be good check-in points for the community in terms of understanding what the project is, how it's shaping up, um, what that cross section looks like. If there's any design feedback or input, um, we can collect that we can use, we would ask at that time. Uh, then we would get that information. We'd get to the final design. And then kind of similar to what we did with the GMP amendment, we would, um, uh, put together bid documents. We would issue those. We would select a contractor. And then that contractor, we would put forward before city council for approval and then we would construct. So hopefully that gives you a real quick sense of what the timeline is. But I could see check-in points at milestones, um, along, um, key milestones during the design portion of the project. Um, but I do think it's good to remind people that, you know, the framework in which we develop these projects are founded in policy that came from a public process. And so we're not starting with, hey, what does Dan think that cross section should look like? It's, this is the cross section that's in the transportation systems plan. And so that's where we start. And that's really helpful because it helps us say, well, this is, this is founded on community input. So it's a good tool for staff to be able to have a starting point.
So Leila, that was great. And I, I think you're absolutely right that there's, uh, great underpinnings in place for, uh, this project in general, and I think for, for me at least, for option one. But, uh, it's still, a lot of what you just referred to is still, uh, in the weeds for a lot of folks in town and, and they're not familiar with it. They will be familiar with, um, you know, the city got this big whopping check from the state. Um, and it looks like, you know, will look like to some people that we got a big check from the state. And the first thing we want to do is spend some more money on top of that. And for what purpose exactly? I thought the, uh, affordable housing thing was already happening anyway. Why does this need to happen now in conjunction with that? So I just want to make sure we, we have a great story to tell here and I want to make sure we get the narrative uh, as accurate as possible from Jump Street so that we're not, you know, trying to explain it, uh, as we go. Uh, so, so on the, the first question, I guess, is how, how do we, how do we talk about, um, you know, there was already a sense in the community that something was happening out there, uh, below the Highlands or behind the Highlands on affordable housing. And, uh, then we kind of got that surprise good news from Salem. So, so fit those two pieces together, right? I, you already have essentially on this call, but how do we, how do we talk about that in the community? How do we talk about the fact that, uh, the, the housing projects presumably were already moving along, uh, well. And so is this, is this new money from the state really that critical to that project? Uh, and what would have happened if we didn't get the money from the state, particularly since we were somewhat surprised to have received it? Uh, and then the other issue is, how do we talk to the community about, um, well, why couldn't you have figured out a way to get that windfall from the state and not add to the, uh, the costs locally? Um, I mean, I, I, I'm not fighting you here. I think it's a great opportunity to leverage all those state dollars and to add, uh, uh, some of our own, uh, particularly from, uh, given where they're coming from and also including the, uh, the easements, uh, as part of the package. But I just want to make sure we talk about it, uh, well, from the get-go.
Yeah. Um, those are all great points. Um, and I'll, I'll try to be succinct. So the developments, they're always on their own path, right? Developers are always coming up with ideas, spitballing, whatever. And, um, this is a bit further along than that. So we have two development teams that are working on income restricted home, housing projects that are in that ten acres. So they can do that and they can go through the land use process even, and we can, being planning commission can approve that. At the end of the day, we can't issue a certificate of occupancy if they don't have access to the adequate fire flow that Dan's talking about, which they wouldn't at this time. So when we started, um, getting rumblings about this, this is, you know, these folks have been sniffing around for a couple of years. These things take typically five to seven years before a project goes from an idea to, you know, starting of construction. And so staff have been talking about this internally about, wow, we have these. we know this is coming, we've, Dan can probably speak to this if we want him to, but we've been dealing with issues of flow in, in the Highlands. We had, we had to work with the landowner to build pump house to get that. So we've known there's some concerns here about this particular issue. And so staff has been just sort of like trying to figure out a way to address it because we do, as a city, have a responsibility to provide infrastructure, particularly now when it comes to housing. And so we were aware of that, we're aware of the community's concern about affordable housing. And so staff had already been kind of at work around, how can we create a project that we could actually build this coming fiscal year, as I mentioned? So we were working towards a project that would have actually been funded entirely out of SDCs um from the water fund. And we were looking at a project, it was about 1.3 million to get this initial line in. Um, because what we didn't want to have happen is have these projects go through land use and then have us say, sorry, we can't serve it. And we know enough to know how financially constrained these types of affordable housing projects are. There's no way they're going to be able to uh build the infrastructure that we need them to or that they need in order to have the flow they need to build those homes. So we knew this was coming and we were already developing an alternative plan to that. Now, the classic street project is a number, is our number one project. And the way that we pitched this project to the state, now we're surprised, being that we're pleasantly surprised that we got the money, but it's not a shock because we asked for it. We said, we want for, we know affordable housing is coming. We know that this area in our urban growth boundary is where all the future housing growth is going to go. We have to solve this problem. And so when the state came out saying, hey, do you have any infrastructure projects that uh we would need to, you know, that you could do in order to leverage housing in the next five years? And we were like, oh, yeah. But it's not just the water part, it's also the increasing the transportation auctions. And that's why the roadway is part of this, is that we are trying to lay the framework for folks to have alternate modes of transportation safe, safe modes of transportation, right? It's also our one, number one TSP project. So, so when we started to look at the whole thing, um, we realized that we needed this other sort of little spur line that Dan talked about, which added that additional cost. And essentially what we're getting is for less than half the investment to get basically a quarter of what we're doing, we're able to deliver the city's number one transportation project, which the people in this community have been clamoring for, that will also support all the housing that will be developed in the UGB because those folks can now walk or bike a lot easier and safer once this project's in place. And it will provide the needed water infrastructure in order to support housing development and needed housing in our urban growth boundary. Like, it's a win-win. But that's why we came up with these other options is to say that, okay, if we don't want to do the full thing, then we just take the road out of it and we can do the rest for that $2.7 million. And I think, you know, like Dan said, this is an opportunity. But if that's the direction that council wants us to go, we're down with that. We just want to get the water system in place to make good on these uh resources from the state, get that gravel pathway in place. Because we do think that's a really critical component of um this project and of our transportation system. Um, we can do that for $2.7 million, I think. So that's kind of why we wanted to present both these options to you right now is to say that, or we could add a little bit more to this project and we can get it all.
All right. So if we can boil that down to a Facebook sized comment, I think we're, we'll be good.
Always working on that.
Right.
More for your money. Um, so I guess, yeah, I guess what we're looking for from, from you all is uh, you know, we are uh, you know, general consensus that there's a comfort level here. Um, and then I am, you know, we'll have an opportunity to talk about this through the budget process too. If council during that time between now and when the budget proposal is presented, um, you can change your mind at that time and we can make those adjustments then. Um, but again, there's a number of decision points all along the way for council when it comes down to the engineer and the contractor. And um it'll be similar to just a lot simpler and quicker um than the city hall process. We'll be doing cost estimates and sharing them as we move along. Cause I've got a budget to finish in the next week or so, so actually pay or two, actually.
So from my perspective, it seems like uh we, we got a gift based on our hard work and our preparation. And um from what I understand from the state, most of the funds that were given for affordable housing had to do with water. Water tends to be the biggest issue. Uh, access to infrastructure and water has been the biggest issue for affordable housing statewide. Um, so we, we were able with hard work to get this, this funding. Uh, we were planning to go ahead without the funding. This allows us to prepare to be able to do at, at one time, a job that we plan to do in the future. It's not like we're creating something because we have a little extra funds, so we're gonna, we're gonna do this wonderful Cadillac kind of thing. What it is, is it is allowing us to complete a, a plan more rapidly than we expected because we've been able to access funds from the state. And I think uh doing it, doing it in one, at one time makes a lot of sense. I think it, it uh is able to plan from a staff perspective. It, it doesn't, it doesn't cause us to double duty on things that we'd have to do if we have to go back uh to the plan and put in a road and, and do that at the next level. So from my perspective, I totally support the option number one.
I agree with Linda's comments and would support option one as well.
Uh, so do I. I'm interested to see what it looks like when you include it in the budget presentation.
Yeah, I think uh, I think option one is uh perfectly defensible. It's a little uh complicated to understand and I, I, I sometimes fear that, you know, we have these good conversations with a small group of people and we all understand it pretty well and we trust the uh inputs. Uh, and I just think we need to take care to um convey uh as much as possible what, what Leila laid out, uh Leila laid out as the sort of big picture, long range vision here. Uh, but I certainly support option one.
It's subject to the budget discussions. Uh, this is the, the way I've always been when I, when I was watching council, I was like, what's the bigger? What's the bigger impact? What else is affected? What's the opportunity cost? Um, so I, I like, I, I think anytime that we can satisfy multiple needs of the community at once, I mean, that's excellent. And the fact that we did the hard work on the transportation system plan and that laid the groundwork for this, that's excellent also. So I do see a lot of things coming together with this project. Um, it's an adjustment to think about that. And I'm not speaking to people who don't already know this, but it's an adjustment to think about that work on top of the other work we have on the plate, um, which also includes our comprehensive plan for next year, all of which require staff time, all of which in a quieter year could be the project for a city, you know? And now we'll have three. So I like, no surprise, I like some time to think about it um and consider the options we have. I like and I appreciate that you did bring in options uh because it, it just gives us a good way to consider the pros and cons. Um, yeah, but I think, you know, you and Dan and the crew have done a great job of doing the preparation and the planning work that um Linda laid out. And then also being able to quickly respond when it was needed. So this is kind of a combination of steady, long-term planning and then quick response when something comes through. And so I commend everybody for their work on that to get us this far. And so any hesitation you might hear from me is simply me thinking. It's not uh, it's not disagreement, it's not um concerned. It's more just thinking about how everything comes together. So actually, the timing of it's excellent because uh in terms of discussing budget for next year, we're, we're right in there. So we get a chance to see how the, how our money lines up with our intentions. So, and that's what the budget's supposed to do, so. That's good. So, okay, so do you have what you need on this topic, do you think, Leila? Or is there anything you want to say?
Yeah, no, I, yes, I, I, I do. And I appreciate what you just said. And um what we'll do is we'll plan for this. And then, and that was kind of like by design, right? Is to talk through these projects today. This is a work session, so you're not being asked to make a decision. I just wanted to get the temperature of the room. As the budget officer, I gotta put something in front of you in a couple of weeks. And we've, we've been uh repositioning since we got this news to address that. So I feel like I have really clear direction. And yeah, and just know that staff's willing to work with council um to design a project that fits. And um we can make those adjustments um during the budget process if you elect to do so at that time. So we're, we're totally cool with that. But this is great feedback, so thank you. We got exactly what we needed.
Okay.
I, I just would like to make one statement, I just to, to add to what Jerry said. Um, and, and what we'll be talking about a little bit later. But our, I think our, one of our biggest challenges is to take a really good project like this that is complicated and complex and isn't, I mean, it takes a little bit of time to kind of get all the facts together so you understand the logic and where it came from. And the fact that it's not an immediate decision, it's based on work that's gone back several years. But communicating that to the public in a way that they can understand is really critical. And um, and I, and I appreciate Jerry's comment and I really hope we can focus on multiple ways of communicating projects like this so that the public has a, as a trust in our judgment and understands why we made these decisions, that, that we're doing great, great things. And I'm not sure, I, I think we're, we need to be working more on how we communicate that to the public.
No, I completely agree, Linda. So uh, kind of Leila's got a good sense of the room, a temperature of the room. So I think uh if there's not anything else, we'll move on to the next uh capital improvement project. So 20 is plenty. So this is a, a essentially a program that Mike Sims has been involved with. Leila has been a huge part of this. Um, I'm brought in on the course, the infrastructure side of it. And I've actually been learning a lot too on it. Um, I was able to do some searching and one of the things that interesting to me, because I, once again, I wear multiple hats, is the, essentially when you look at speeds and injuries, you know, we're, a lot of our streets are posted for 25. Seems like sometimes people like to use that 30 mark. But the 20 mark is kind of interesting on the fact that the likelihood of fatality or severe injury from being hit drops all the way down to 10%. That's pretty drastic, not that we want to see 10% at all. But that is the, essentially the stuff that comes from the, the Department of Transportation. So you guys will be hearing a lot more about 20 is plenty, I'm pretty sure, in the coming, coming months. So, but I wanted to talk about infrastructure and the stuff I want to talk about. So what is part of plenty, 20 is plenty? Well, that's going to be an approach of using the electronic radar signs like we see on Lanita Avenue, um fixed speed signs. Uh, we're talking about adding some marked crossings in some of the areas that are part of the collector streets, the walking path areas, the bike path areas, things like that. Uh, I probably mean my favorite part of this whole thing, the yard signage. I'm sorry, but I get a kick out of the slow the flock down. And that's actually given out by the, the Seattle Department of Transportation. Portland Department of Transportation's are using these. Sorry, my own, my own bad humor, but I like it. And then uh, uh, shareo markings, um which if you've been around Portland, you've seen them. I've been keeping a need eye out, they use several different markings, but the typical bicycle with a, with a set of chevrons showing in direction and let uh drivers know that they got to share a lane. So this is the part for public works that I've, like I said, been part of. Here's a couple of maps. If you're not familiar with these maps, this is where I'm going to throw the little punchline you should be because this is part of our transportation system plan that we all looked over many, many, many times. So Leila beat it into our heads to read it, go over it, memorize it. So I can tell you this is page 32 by memory, but no, really. So our collectors, so let's talk about collector streets. So we're talking about the ones you see on your map on the left, which is going to be the green, essentially roads, and then a major collector, which is Lanita. And then on the right side, you'll see the pedestrian and essentially bike path routes. These are the areas we will be concentrating the most on, trying to, to get that information out there, slow drivers down. And the cost estimate discussion. Um, there's not really many options at this point. We are literally just putting the money aside for the infrastructure uh on it. Doesn't mean we'll use all of that, course that infrastructure, but we are definitely going to put a, a pretty good bite on trying to get uh the 20 and plenty program up and running. So any questions on this, on this section? I think Linda's saying something, but she's muted.
Can you talk a little bit about the construction costs, what that goes into?
So essentially the construction costs were um are for, like I said, the signage. Like uh we are budgeting for eight electronic signs, um budgeting for several fixed signs. I have, I believe off the top of my head, it was like 360 feet of the 12 inch marker to be able to do across the walks. Um, and then uh money for, I can't remember how many shareo markers. I think there was 20 of them, 25 of them. So, so that's just the infrastructure. Where the work is going to be on this, honestly, my part's easy. The hard part's going to be on the, on the resolutions, ordinances, traffic and reducing the traffic speed and stuff. That's where the hard, hard lift and hard work is going to be. So that's going to be on Leila, on Mikey Sims um and such to get that, all of that in line into you guys to be able to go through it, decide what you want to do and with the community. I can easily say I have the easy part.
Works great.
So Dan, um, eight of the electronic signs, where would you place eight of those? That seems like a lot.
Well, considering some places, we would be putting them in two different directions, like classic. The one on Classic Street currently is just a battery operated one. So Eric and them have to go out every, what is it, Leila, about every two, three days and change the battery on it? And so we would be putting, like I said, the same one that's on Lanita Avenue. And actually as a little bonus gift on those traffic signs too, they actually capture data for Eric. He can get some information on it that's very generic, but like how many people are, are actually going over the speed limit and such, so. But when you look back at uh the map here, you can see we have Nakarni City area. We have Carmel, um Ocean, even though Ocean Road is not a city street, it's still inside our urban growth boundary, so we'd be working with the county. But that's also another area we want to protect our public people from.
Yeah, and we're, so there's kind of two pieces to the, sorry, Dan mentioned, there's the policy and implementation is Dan's piece of it. So staff have already worked on a preliminary map where we think the new signs need to go. And then where the um, I, uh, Mike led this, Sergeant Mike Sims with the uh, where those signs should go, where the radar signs and then also regular signs. Because in order for our guys to issue any citations, um, we have to have, it has to be signed. So the street has to be signed in order for us to. So, so we're working on developing those um maps and that's what informed Dan's cost estimate. Uh, so we'll have all that data as we start, you know, share with you guys of where we're proposing to put the signs, where we're proposing to put the sharos. All that stuff will come as we work through the process with you. All that stuff will come as we work through the process with you over the next year or so. And this may take a year and a half for us to implement. We'll just kinda have to see, um, how quickly things move along. These are fairly straightforward fixes for us. And, you know, they're low cost, big impact. So, um, I'll work with Dan to find a way to make sure we can get these done quickly. Cause they do, they make a huge difference.
When you talk about radar signs, um, yeah, are, are you talking about, uh, implementing a photo enforcement rule?
No, I'm talking about the one that's like on Lanita and it says slow down. So those are radar, they catch your speed and they tell you faster going, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And a, a question, this, this would apply basically to city limits and UGB.
Just city limits.
Okay.
So the city only has, as the road authority, which is the you, city council acts as the road authority. Um, you only have jurisdiction over your own city limits. So we can't do anything else.
The Nacarney Road, for example, would remain, I think it's 30 or 35.
Yes, but if it passes through our jurisdiction, then we can regulate speed. But so for the portion of Nacarney that passes through the city of Manzanita, we can regulate county road speed in our jurisdiction. We can't regulate it outside of our jurisdiction. It was part of the homework we did to figure out how to lower the speeds.
Well, I think a fringe benefit to this is, uh, our great topic of revenue diversification. We may get some, some more fines out of this and in the process of getting people to slow down.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's it, right Dan?
Uh, that's.
Oh, you had one more slide, I feel like, which is just kind of the maintenance projects that we can, if we can get to them, we will.
Yeah. This is just a quick list of, of projects that are, as we say, is in the CIP, which they show, but they're on the horizon. Can we absolutely say by these dates, are they gonna happen? Uh, not necessarily, cause some of them, especially when you talk about multi, or projects that are coming from multiple funds. Some of those funds are unfunded, but they are on our list, uh, of projects to do in the future. Um, most of the water projects though are funded. And so those ones we will be looking at in the future to be completed. So, so essentially this is our, our next five year plan.
In addition to the three we talked about today. So the capital improvement plan that'll be part of the budget will have kind of updated numbers for these projects. And then our estimates for the three projects we talked about. And just, you know, to be clear, like we're at the very rough order of magnitude, cost estimating stage of things, back of the envelope. So please don't get tied to any of the numbers you see here, because they will change. Um, we will, as we have with other bigger projects, keep you totally up to date on how that flexes. And Dan did a really good job on his cost estimation, just ensuring we had sufficient contingency to, apply the Scotty method to the way that we do projects too.
Are there any other water projects that are coming up that aren't on this list? I'm thinking of the, um, our collection, our collection of water collection, uh, devices on the top of the hill there. So are we saying effectively by this that we'll be beyond 2030? Before we be in a spot to be able to deal with that?
Well, that's the reservoir projects, yes.
Oh, you're, oh, sorry Catherine, you're talking about the reservoirs themselves?
Yes.
Yeah, they're still in the long term, because the funding for those is very expensive. And we're still, we're still in the background trying to work towards, uh, more grants to essentially move engineering along. So I've already been in contact with the original engineering firm that did our last grant to help out on it with it, with us. And we're trying to look at trying to take us maybe another thing in the future to bump us to the next step. But that wouldn't be in this budget year. It would probably be in the next budget year and you'll see it in the budget if we're moving that way.
Okay, I think, um, somewhere in our future, not in the next couple of months, but we probably should have a beyond the budget discussion. We should have a, um, just review of everything that's on there and why it is scheduled the way it is and the, the thought about the sequencing behind it. Cause we, obviously all these things are important and the time we spend, you know, the time we spend and the way we have the next couple of years allocated are gonna be really important. So it's, although it's a hard stretch for people to look five and 10 years out. I mean, that's part of our work, obviously as well and part of council's work. So I think some time, some time in a workshop or something to devote to that would be good, Leila. Post budget, post a couple of big milestones, but yeah. And also good for public, um, not education exactly, but public awareness of what else is in the works. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, well, I think that's, that's the end of our piece. This is really helpful for me, so thank you for the.
Great job, Leila and Dan, just a great job.
Yes, that was time well spent and my dog, my dog agrees. So I'm gonna mute and ask Linda to take us to the next part of the agenda.
Okay, so I, unfortunately I don't have the agenda in front of me. So Leila, what is the next part of the agenda?
FAQs.
Oh, FAQs, excellent. A very important part. So Brad, do you wanna take a leadership role in that discussion?
I will. Um, as I think you all know, and hopefully most of our, um, attendees here are where we created a new city council email address to make it easier for folks to get in touch with the whole team instead of individually. One of the suggestions we had from a member of the public was as we receive questions and comments via this mailbox, that we have something like any websites out there, UC or support systems, uh, a list of frequently asked questions. So far, at the last council meeting, and I would plan to do this moving forward, we've given some general statistics about the number of emails that we've received into that mailbox, uh, what topic they were on and if there were any specific questions, we answered. Uh, I reviewed those during the city council meeting. So I guess based on that, um, suggestion from the public, uh, I'd like your feedback of what you would think about actually creating a published FAQ. And I don't know where we would do that yet. I assume it's something we would propose to put on the city website. And before your, your feedback, a couple of comments I would like to make is obviously this will take some, uh, resource time to create FAQs, to update them on the website. Uh, I would be happy to help with that, of course, with Josh's, so we'd need Josh's support to do so. Um, so there'll be a bit of a lift there for some resources to actually construct this information and publish it. And then, um, I would say a, another, uh, question or something to think about is many times a question is asked, we answer it. And if we published an answer, there is potential things change. So that answer may be different. So we also need to think about if we're publishing something rather than just the, the resources it would take not just to publish that information, compile it, but to also potentially maintain and change it. Uh, I don't think FAQs are a bad idea, but, uh, obviously we want council input before we do it or make a decision to move forward with something like digital FAQs published online.
So are you looking for feedback?
Yes.
So Brad, looking at, since you have a pretty good, um, cross section of, uh, questions that have already come in, I realize a lot of them are on the, uh, the water billing. But given the cross section that has come in, have you sort of looked at those to get a sense of how many you could convert into a meaningful FAQ or? I wouldn't, I wouldn't think every, I'm assuming every email that comes in doesn't lend itself to an FAQ.
Sure. That is, that is correct. Some of them are just comments or, uh, many of them were repetitive. So we obviously wouldn't publish the same question and answer multiple times. But I believe in the last council meeting with the statistics, uh, we gave about six of the emails we received out of 30. I've already filed my notes, so I don't have the numbers in front of me, but around, uh, six out of 32 or 33 emails received contained questions. And in some of those, I would say we averaged two or three questions. So within a month, we probably got, let's say a dozen to 18 questions. But I believe, as you said, a lot of those arose over, uh, the water billing messages that we received back. And I would say the other majority were specific to the city hall project.
So I'm wondering if we could use FAQs to get detailed information out about specific projects. Like I'm thinking about the projects we're looking at right now. Um, that may be one of the ways to have a place where people could go and look at, at some questions that arise and have the answers as opposed, well, a, a, as well as talking about it in other sections. But, um, that, that may be a way to use FAQs as well.
Well, I think that, um, we already have, uh, a wonderful resource at our fingertips, um, to be able to figure out what ought to be on an FAQ post. And that's, uh, the Manzanita Today publication. Um, there have been a couple of instances where I've felt like I needed to learn a few things. And the first thing that happens is I end up talking with Chip. Um, and he's given me a lot of really good information about the budget process. Um, today Catherine and I talked about, uh, a particular Facebook post having to do with, um, our shared water system between us and Wheeler. And she sent me a article from, uh, Manzanita Today. And these articles are always very well articulated. Um, so maybe, uh, reaching out to Chip and Leila, uh, would be a good idea. Um, because I, I don't think there's any reason to reinvent the wheel, uh, when some of these articles have been put out already and are absolutely awesome.
That's a great point, Tom, because I do know in some conversations with, uh, Chip that Manzanita Today is working on a website. And I believe that that website would contain copies of all of the Manzanita Today publications. So, uh, I am not a fan of duplicating efforts with multiple resources. So if we think, uh, potentially what Manzanita Today is working towards would be adequate to recover this, to cover this request from, uh, some of our public input. Uh, I'm happy to have a conversation with Chip and see what his long-term plans are for the website as far as organizing the articles. And if someone had questions of how, how they would get that out of the Manzanita Today website. I do know, um, and I'm not speaking for Chip, but I know, uh, I think Linda, you've had some experience with this is we don't tell, and I don't think anyone tells Manzanita Today what to publish. It's based on their recounts of attending our meetings. So my only caveat would be is if a question came in, uh, it's something we would have to discuss.
I, I just have to, I just have to stop it there. The Manzanita Today is a private entity, very separate from the city, highly regarded, absolutely highly regarded, but it's not the city. And there's no, there's no connection with the city to Manzanita News. I will tell you on the side, I've tried to change Chip's mind, because I think it would be a great way to get city information out. And it is an absolute no. And that, and I think in the long run, that's the best. He does his, he and Leila do her, Leila, that do their work extraordinarily well. But it's a totally separate entity. So I appreciate the thought. I mean, I agree, it's a great place to go for information. But the city is a separate entity and if we do FAQs, it would need to be from a city.
So I would like to suggest maybe something a little kind of moderate and down the middle. We've been doing this a short period of time. I, I don't, I don't see, um, I don't see a need, at least immediately, to get to doing website work, which always ends up being more work than people realize. Um, I think I'd suggest and think if we just take another 90 days, see what comes in, see what the patterns are, a little bit to Linda's point, that can help us understand if there's something else in the website that's missing, that if people have a question and they can't get it answered, they answer it. Also, we have to remember, there are a lot of people who are not interested and don't use the city website. So, um, we've got to look for other ways to communicate. I think more than anything, Brad, and the, especially with the careful way you've approached this, we can start to see or will see some maybe gaps in communication. So these questions help alert us to that. Often, um, and we'll see what the numbers look like, they're very particular things that aren't, you know, that are just one person's situation and they'd like to know. And it's not something of general interest to the public. So just ask that we take another maybe 90 days, see what the pattern of things is and see what we learned from that. And then, you know, we can use the, uh, council meeting in a brief way. I think it has to be brief to, um, share with the public the kind of questions that have come in. Because the things that are broadly of, of interest are the things that we should be most focused on. And if they point us to a need to get information out in a different way, I think that's the, you know, what Linda talked about is maybe the way to get at it rather than, you know, it, it's one of these things, when you have a website, the answer often becomes put on the website. But the website may actually not be the, the most useful way to do it. And I, with everything we've got on the, um, boards right now, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about time spent on that as a priority. So that's my thought. And echo, echo Linda's comment, because the second I was appointed to council, I was in my, a Polish Lithuanian branch of the family, they have an expression, which is you are sliced off the loaf when you leave the family. And so I was sliced off that loaf in a nanosecond, because I worked with Chip and Leila on that publication for several years. So it's a good resource, um, but it is not the city's resource. And, and their independence is very important to how they do their work, so.
Well, I just, before we lose the thought, I just wanna underscore something Linda, I think, was saying. Because that seems to me that, um, with something as big as the Classic Street, uh, project that we just discussed, uh, that probably does, that probably does rise to the level of deserving a page on a website. And I think that would be in, how, we're not ready to do it right now, obviously. But that would be an outstanding way for us to pilot, uh, a series of FAQs. Because you would have, I can easily think of a dozen off the top of my head, questions about that project that could be answered in an FAQ, uh, approach. And I think it would sort of establish a, uh, a baseline for us to use, uh, going forward for other, uh, projects. At some point, we might need a FAQ that just kinda is a catchall for all kinds of issues. But I think FAQs are most helpful when they take a complicated project and break it down incrementally, uh, for readers. Um, so that might, the, the Classic Street project might give us a outstanding opportunity to, to do that. And I, you know, I, I look at the, the, I'm sorry, but I look at the page. I think there's a page on the, uh, current website that sort of catalogs so much stuff about the city hall project. It's really exhaustive and it's, 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 it's good. I'm sure it's served a lot of folks well, but it's not, uh, it's not as user friendly as it probably could be. Uh, and if we start the Classic Street project sort of expecting that we're gonna have some of the same challenges with communication that we've had with the city hall project, we can sort of build into that website from the start, webpage from the start, um, a, a user friendly approach and FAQs would be right in the center of that.
I really agree, Jerry, that I think that would be a real possibility there. And it gives us some time to think about it, think about how we want to do it, um, and prepare for it.
I agree with Catherine. So just to recap, at the normal council meetings on a monthly basis, I'll continue doing a brief summary of emails received, any pertinent requests, questions and answers that we've given out. And longer term, we keep an eye on what's coming in, see if we see any patterns, potentially other places we need to improve communication and potentially use Classic Street or one of the other CIP projects as a sort of test grounds if we see that's beneficial moving forward. And I am keeping copies of the summaries and the questions and answers. So if at some point in the future, we do decide to do something with them publication-wise, we'll have that information available. Thank you. That was, that was it. Then let someone else who's got something else on FAQs.
Thank you, Brad. Thanks for the work you're doing on that. Appreciate it. So we've got, next item is the Proposed Amendment to Council Rules of Procedure. Tom, you're going to take us through this? You're muted?
Yep, I'm off.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so at our last work session, it was brought to our attention that there was a member of one of the city's committees that had made a comment on Facebook, not the original post, but a comment on a post that, and I think all of our views was hate speech. And that was troubling. At that point, I had not, and Jerry had not really reviewed the rules of procedure about whether or not there was some sanction that we could bring against this person. And the next day, he and I talked, we realized that there is a sanction available in Rule Eight, which would be to have council decide to dismiss the person from the committee. Catherine and I spoke about that. And, and then she spoke with Leila also about it. And in the meantime, Jerry and I talked about how we would maybe reword some of this so that it became clear to everybody what the understanding, what the rules are around all of this. We decided that Rules Eight and Ten don't need to be modified. They're satisfactory in their current form. But when you get to the Rules of Decorum, Ethics Decorum and Outside Statements, they clearly only apply to the council. And so what I've done is prepared an amendment to Rule Nine about Ethics Decorum and Outside Statements. And Nancy distributed that to the rest of council this morning. The areas that are in red are the areas that I've taken a stab at making this amendment so that the rule would extend to committee members as well. What I really would like, and then also Linda, following that meeting, provided the rest of us with a copy of Resolution 2022. And, you know, I've spoken with Leila recently about how to go about finding resolutions. And I really need to go to Leila to find them because they're not under the ordinances tab. And there's a slew of them, and they're not particularly organized on any basis other than the order that they came up during the course of any given year. So I don't think that a whole lot of members in the community recall Resolution 2022. And it just so happened that Catherine and I had a meeting with the person that made this post. The post itself was on a page that Dave Dillon.
Um, I'm going to ask you to stop, and I'm sorry for the rudeness, but I don't think the details of that are at all appropriate for this session. So maybe what we could focus on is the, let me try to state it and then let's see kind of where it goes. What we found, what we found is a gap between some expectations about what's appropriate for commenting on in social media or in the press in general for people who participate in city committees or commissions. And in this case, it's just a few groups of people. So when we look at the, when we look at what's spelled out for what's expected for behavior of council members, we have some, I'll just call them rules and regulations, but those are in place. But we've never, we've never formalized that in the past as it relates to people who by appointment to committees actually become an extension and part of city government. It's a, it's a different thing to be on a commission than it is to be on council for sure. But we realized that maybe we hadn't been as clear or wasn't as clear to everyone as we thought about what that should look like. So I think the point of this is to look at the rules as it relates to ethics and decorum and outside statements and say, is it time now that we've kind of formalized that and make that part of the onboarding process when people come on to commission positions or committee positions, which we have not done in the past. So that would be the, that would be the change.
Well, and aside from that, though, I'm glad you talked about the onboarding process because I think that it would be an important part also of the appointment, of the appointment process to include a question to anybody that's applying, whether they have any problem complying with Rule Nine as amended and Resolution 2022.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's kind of the, how it would get implemented in a part of the, but in fact, we have not formally asked that of, of members. So this is an opportunity to, through amending a council, and we'll have to talk about the mechanics of it, but by amending this council rule of procedure, we would be adding the reference to any of our standing committees or commissions as being a part of that as well. And then just like members of council, that would be part of, you know, what you know that you're signing up for and agreeing it. So we could make it part of the interview process, or there's a number of ways that could be handled. So, so I think that maybe the gist of the feedback would be from council would be if people think that this is the right move to make and it makes sense for us. And then we can talk about the mechanics of what that would look like.
Well, I, I did have a chance to review it, and I thought it was very appropriate and consistent with, with what we were thinking was happening and just hadn't written down and put in, in, in the rules and regulations. So I support, I totally support this change. And by the way, as a city council, we have to sign the fact that we've read these rules and understand them. So I think it's also consistent with what, what we do in general.
Yeah, I just remember, I just remember earlier, I guess last year, when we, when the council significantly rewrote Rule Eight, being struck by the fact that we had all of this back and forth and a lot of work went into it and revisions. And then you get down to the very bottom of Rule Eight, and it says something about council has the right to remove a committee member. But we never, we never really discussed, you know, the grounds for removing a committee member. And it would, I, I hope and think that we'll probably not likely have to ever remove a committee member. But if we ever did have to use that authority, it would be only fair to everyone involved, including the, the committee member, to have some sense of what was at issue. And I think what Tom has done with his proposed amendment is he sort of brought the fundamental rules of conduct laid out in Rule Nine of council members and extended them to members of committees and commissions that council appoints. So I think it's pretty straightforward, probably an oversight as the rules were initially drafted. And it's just an effort to clean that up, close that gap.
I agree with everyone else's comments and certainly support this change in the rules to make it apply to committee members as well. One question, and I may have forgotten, but I did read through all the rules when I was on boarded. What about adding a non-discrimination clause here? Something to the effect of discrimination for race, sexual orientation, et cetera. Gender bias is not tolerated for any member of council and/or a committee. Something to consider.
That's essentially what Resolution 2022 is. If you'd like me to go back and add a reference to Resolution 2022, I can find a place to put that in. But really, as a part of any of the application process, I think they just, everybody needs to have read both of those documents before they apply to any position with the city. And I'll just leave it at that.
I, I personally would like to see a statement in here that just refers to Resolution 2022, saying that that should also be applicable to any committee members as well.
I think that makes good sense, Brad. And it takes advantage and gets us a chance to reinforce that work that was done a few years ago. So, yeah. So what are the, I confess my complete lack of knowledge on this one. What is it that we have to do to make an amendment to Council Rule of Procedure? Leila, is that something handled in a council meeting in a formal manner, I'm assuming?
It is. So the way that we've done it is, think by resolution. So we have a kind of formal policy record of the action. So I believe that's what we did last time.
I think it is.
And you do a red line strikeout version of the language. And then we do a resolution that includes it, I think is an attachment. I'll have to figure it out, but you do it via resolution.
Okay, that's fine. So we can, did everybody get a chance to say something on this? Have we missed anybody? Okay, so I think we've got the general direction of what we need to do there. And we can look at what it'll take to get that finished and then get the reference in as we discussed, and then get that on a council agenda.
Great.
That'll be great.
So I'll do my revision and I'll shoot it over to you, Leila.
Yeah, and then I'll, I'll see when it can, it would go to a regular session. We don't need another work session on this. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll look at the forecaster and get you on there.
Yep, that'd be great.
Do we have, I'm just thinking, just thinking about new committee members coming on.
STR in June.
It'd be nice to get this, you know, get this in place as soon as we can. I appreciate the forecaster, but I think this one is kind of a housekeeping matter. If we can do it pretty quickly, then we can catch the incoming planning comp, comp plan folks, the new STR folks.
Yeah. And we can, I mean, short of the formal timing for the council, we can also just reach out to the chairs of those committee. I mean, I think that'll be a, you know, they'll have to go through it with existing members too. So that, that should be fine. So we can take care of that outside of a council meeting. But it'll be good to get it done sooner.
So Catherine, just to recap on that, any existing committee members as well as new people being on boarded would be expected to obviously follow these rules. The committee chairs would communicate that into the existing committees. And then moving forward, any new committee members that apply, this would be part of the application process, saying, I've read this and I have no issue with it. Thus, I'll move forward with my application.
Yeah. And I'm happy if we can ask what the council, with the commission and committee leaders prefer, I'd be happy to show up to a meeting and just give some background for them and say, this is here and we're doing this. And just make sure if they have any questions, they get answered. So I'm happy to take the point for that if people would like me to do that.
Well, I think STR is fine. I can do that on STR, but I'm thinking about the planning commission.
Okay.
Would be really important for you to step in and, and do that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Karen and then we can, we'll figure out a way to take care of the budget committee. So, but we'll just take, I'll take the point for that.
Thanks for your work on this, Tom. Very important.
And thanks for addition of 2022. I am just delighted to see that included in this. I think that's really important.
Yeah.
So Linda, you had one more thing that you asked?
Oh, I do. Yes, I do. Real quickly. So as has come up today, we're, the council is really working hard to get as many opportunities and as many different ways to reach out to the community and give the community a chance to give us feedback directly, to answer any questions, to be a resource for the community. And this full city council is absolutely committed to doing that and wants to do that in as progressive and positive way as possible. So we actually have three opportunities to do that. The first we talked about today, and that is ask a counselor through the city council email. We've had really good response to that. Brad has just done an exceptional job, who has been the lead in terms of responding to people on that. He's shared it with all of us, but he's kind of been the person, the go-to person. Just done an outstanding job of responding to those emails. And we really want to hear, I mean, if, if you have a gripe or you're upset or you saw something on social media and you just, it just doesn't sound right or there's got to be something going on, please send, send an email or use one of these other two options. Email may be most, most efficient if you just come across something and want to talk about it immediately. The second is we are returning to conversations with counselors. Conversations with counselors is a very focused discussion around an issue. It's a small group of people getting together to listen, truly to listen, to answer any questions about a specific issue. We've had issues around short-term, we've had discussions around short-term rentals. We've had discussions around financing the city hall. And currently, we are beginning what will be a fairly long process looking at revenue diversification. And Jerry is taking the lead in his first on prepared food tax as an option for diversifying our revenue. It, they, the process right now, before the process of conversations with counselors really was leading to a decision fairly immediate. These, this diversification of revenue is really a long-term discussion. We're going to be talking about a lot of options. This is one of many options. But getting your input on it is really important. And it's, the next one is on April the 23rd, it will be at the visitor center. It's on the website, all the dates and the ability to sign up is on the website. We really encourage you to participate in that. We've had one already that went really well and was a very engaging conversation and gave us good input. So that's, that's the second. And then the third is a much more casual discussion. It's a discussion that's, it's just, we're just open to come, come have a cup of coffee, have a sweet roll, tell us what you're thinking, ask us questions, bring any issues. And that's, we're calling Counselors Corner. And that's going to be once a month, every third Thursday. And the first one is this Thursday, next Thursday, the 16th or 18th of April. It will be from nine to 10:30. Catherine and I will be there. It is at the Offshore Grill, and we really will have coffee and treats for you. So if you just want to come and have a cup, a cup of coffee, that's fine with us. But it is just, it's just a place to feel comfortable about asking questions and getting information. If we don't have the answer, we'll get it to you as soon as we can. So those are our three options right now. We really hope you take advantage of those. We, we are excited about doing them and we will continue to be looking for ways that we can effectively communicate with the public. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you.
And Linda, if I can just add a couple of comments. The conversations with counselors and Counselors Corners dates are on the city website on the calendar. So if anybody looks at the calendar, you'll see them. looks at the calendar, you'll see them there. We're asking people to RSVP and sign up for conversations with counselors, primarily due to the limited space of the visitor center. So the currently planned meetings will be on the same topic of revenue diversification. So if one of the meetings sells out, you can certainly attend another one to speak on the same topic. And just some feedback I received from a couple of business people that approached me about the revenue diversification topic. Keep in mind, these topics are for discussion purposes. These are ideas that were brought up by the consultants on the revenue diversification topic. So it does not mean that this is going to happen. This is a discussion to get the public's input about these ideas. So no decisions have been made. This is simply to get your feedback and input.
Thank you, Brad. That's really good input, and spot on.
And I'd love to be coming to some of these coffees, but then there would be three of us, and it would be a quorum. So.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, so you will have an opportunity to do that. Catherine and I are kicking it off. The next one could well be you and Jerry, Brad, and, yeah, so everybody's going to be there at some point, for sure.
Everybody gets their turn.
Everybody gets their turn.
Just good, because this is a good opportunity to talk with people and get a little more, a little less formal than having to sit down at a table with a microphone in a public meeting to say what you think. So we are, and it's going to be a little easier for us to, not easier, but just different, a little more relaxed. So that's good. I won't need a script, I hope. So I think that'll be great. So that'll be, thanks. Thank you for the reminders about all that. So before I, I have something to say in closing, but before I do that, does anybody have anything else they want to add before we finish? Okay, so.
Tom, you're on mute.
So we did receive a message from Laura Bailey this morning on a topic that Catherine and I had spoken about yesterday. So I've responded to Laura already, and we'll follow up on that one, just so you Don't need to
This is on the, in the city councilor's email?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
Okay, so to finish, thanks, everybody. We covered a lot of ground here today. And I know, looking at those capital projects, you know, some of us for the first time to really see it and try and take it all in, you know, it requires some good devotion to listen and really think. So I appreciate everybody's contributions there. I want to thank Leila and Dan in particular for the work that went into the capital discussion we had. I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, the first time I met Leila years when she go, when she got here, and she sat down and we were talking about priorities and what she'd be doing. And one of the very first things she talked about was long-range capital planning. And I jumped out of my deck chair and said, yay, all for that. So we've had a long history of getting good things done in this town. There's no, there is no doubt about that. And that goes back a long ways. What we've done in the last three years in particular is really accelerate the professionalism of that, meet the increasing requirements from the public, that they understand what's going on, how things were decided, who was involved, what's it going to cost, what's it going to mean? Expectations about that are far higher now than they were five and certainly 10 years ago. So I think all the work that staff has done, and this includes financial staff and other members of our teams, to get us to the point where we really can make it look like such a simple thing. Well, we'll just pull off a project from the top of our list that matches the criteria for these grants. And then it goes to the state, and then the state says, you can have that money. That looks pretty well thought through. And then it comes back to us, not as a pleasant surprise, certainly, but not just a total shock. There is years of work that got us to being able to do this. So even now, when I'm sitting here and I got that serious thoughtful look in my face, like, how is that going to work? What are we going to do? I'm still extremely grateful for all of, all of the development work and all the support of prior council members that have gotten to this point. And we're not done. There's more to come on that. And it looks, to me, it looks really good. And I'm, I'm glad for, I'm glad for the base that we stand on. So I want to thank everybody, and a number of you on this call have been a part of that. So I want to thank everybody for that work. So on that note, a note of thanks, we'll wrap up for today, and we'll look forward to our next meetings together. Somehow, I think it's going to have to do with budget. So we'll be seeing each other all again very soon. But thank you very much. And Leila, thank you, to you in particular, okay? Get out in the sun.
Yeah.
Everybody outside. Bye-bye.
Bye.